Good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart. All right, we'll get moving right on to our presentations, and first up, I'd like to turn it over to Mayor Vince Desanus from the City of Gloversville.
I'm here because historically, the city has handled the cost of crossing guards for the school district. And that's been going on for many years, but lately, the cost of that has increased dramatically. And we contract, we have to contract that out because we don't have the staffing to do it in-house. And it's a company that's, it's gone from, you know, the range of fifty thousand dollars to getting now close to a hundred thousand, ninety-two thousand dollars. And this year, the city has a budget shortfall of over three million dollars, slightly over three million dollars. And it's my job during the course of two thousand twenty-five to make up that shortfall. We have a total budget of twenty-two million dollars, a little over twenty-two million dollars. So you can see where three million dollars is quite a chunk of that. And so I'm asking the school district to take over the cost of the crossing guards. You have a much larger budget than we do, and it's one of those things where we have to do the best we can to maintain services and be more efficient in our costs, our, you know, appropriations for those services, and also to cut costs where we possibly can. So this is something that I think you could help us out quite a bit by taking over that responsibility. And you may have the capability of doing that in-house with staffing, which would be much more cost-effective. We can't do that. So that's my, my, my request.
Two questions. Do other districts, do the cities house it for the districts, or do the school districts house it typically?
I don't, I don't know.
What's the common?
I do know, Nancy. It's not typical for districts to have employees on the streets of the cities. They do have some arrangements where the school systems pay the cities to offset the cost or pay for the cost, but school systems, if you just Google it, they'll tell you the crossing are not typically district employees.
Okay.
I think there's something about the liability of having district employees on the city streets. But this is very cost-sharing arrangements, but typically not district employees. Vince, how much of that increases profit for this California-based company as opposed to the actual cost of the crossing guards?
I don't know the internal, you know, finances of the, of the company.
But they raised it roughly fifty percent the last five years?
Yeah, within the last five years.
Well, it's not that much.
And how many crossing guards in Sol are required?
I don't know the answer to that.
There's two at Boulevard, and I think there's one for every other city elementary school, including that. One part there, one part there, yeah, five of them. And I think the one, the second one added to Boulevard is within the last five or six years, if that's how I like.
I don't know if you've seen Boulevard?
I think there was a request from somebody within the city who thought it was standard. Obviously, we all have the best interest to keep the children safe, and we're making a way to school. So I think this is something that, you know, the board needs to come in and give the pitch. I don't think there's anything the board has to say yes to today. But if you want to, if you, it's up to you. It's your body.
I hypothesized if we were to decide to say yes, is that a year-to-year agreement? Or is that something that once we agree to take it over, that typically would be?
I would think it would be a year-to-year.
So what's the difference in how the, just from my ignorance, the city owned the budget before, right? Out of the twenty-two million. And now we're saying pass it over to our budget, but either way, isn't that all hitting taxpayers in the end? So what's the difference? Help me understand that piece of how that hits differently.
Well, first of all, your tax base is much larger than ours. It's the entire district. We, the only people that pay city taxes are the people that live within the city line. Your budget is seventy-some million?
Yeah.
Our budget is twenty-two million. That's the difference.
So just one question.
Thank you.
Do you ask the, do you give the city the money to continue running the contract? Because they would have to be city employees, or would that all be that?
No, they're not city employees because we contracted out.
Or would we take, completely take over the contract and?
Well, it would be fine if we could get reimbursed for the cost.
I wonder if there's another way to do it, and this company can't be the only show in town. I see the PTA is about to present. There might be people out there in our community who have children. Might be interested in doing something that much more costs.
Yeah, I'm sure they have to be trained and certified.
I actually just did a quick Google search on that, and there's no educational requirements to become a crossing guard. It's a volunteer position. So I'm sure we could outsource from that company. It's a volunteer position. It says the only qualifications you need is to know how to direct drivers and to keep traffic moving safely.
Which I think some certain companies would tell you to provide some training.
I would think so.
But, you know, do I think there's more than one way to screen a cat? And find a more cost-effective way to do this? Maybe there is. But I don't want to hint people to the board for this part of taking down that cost, so it's up to the board to decide.
Okay.
Do you think we can do it? Probably. It's about priorities. Certainly, the safety of kids is a high priority for everybody.
In terms of what, we could do it or not?
We could probably do it, yeah.
I mean, if we financially are able to handle that cost, and I know the city has just gone through a big budget cutting within their departments. You know, if we're in a position to do it, I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Vince, the current, I know your, your budget cycle is January to December, right?
Yes.
So there's a six-month difference cycle. Is the current arrangement through the end of June twenty-five? Or is it cease and desist from January one twenty-five?
No, it's a, it's an annual calendar year.
So it's something that the board would have to make a decision on in the next month? And make, probably make it, put it on the December agenda, make it effective for January one. So we can discuss it further, Vince? I can get back to you. Is that?
Yeah, I think we have two months almost, yeah.
Right.
Well, at least when you're, you know, I think we could probably have something by the end of this month.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vince.
Thanks, Francis.
Good luck with the budget.
Thanks.
Next presentation, we have the elementary PTA here.
Hello.
Turning the screen off because Osama yelled at me, so I might need to turn it back on.
Wait, all right.
Sorry. I'm so sorry.
Just has the camera right on.
Is it still the email that I sent to? Yeah.
Danielle, can you forward that to me, please?
It's just like a meeting.
While they're getting it ready, could Jen do hers?
I'm sorry.
I was saying Jen could do hers while they're taking time to do this. Key Club.
Key Club.
I was gonna look next to the Wi-Fi system, get the verification.
We're boring. Well, I gave up five of the eight minutes of promised Christmas.
Wait, all right. We'll reset.
So first, thank you for giving us an opportunity to come here tonight to kind of reintroduce ourselves. So the PTA is a powerful voice for all children, a relevant resource for families and communities, and a strong advocate for the education and well-being of all children. Over the last hundred and twenty-five years, the PTA has taken part in doing things like bringing kindergarten to public schools, fighting for child labor laws, et cetera. New York State PTA, they do things on a much grander scale. And they give us, a unit, the opportunity to advocate as well. And they kind of give us opportunities throughout the year. Our next opportunity is going to be at the convention in November, which is going to be on the fifteenth, and then all the way up to March, where we get to go to Washington and go to Hill Day. So essentially, if you're a member of the PTA, you have a seat at the table as far as advocacy. Now, I won't go over all of this because it's a lot. But essentially, the areas of advocacy, you have health and safety, education, gun safety, opportunity and equality, special education. So National PTA and New York State PTA get to do all of this advocacy work on a much grander scale. And essentially, what they do is take all of these areas of advocacy and pour them into these programs that we as a unit get to do and bring to the school district. So if you kind of unravel all of those areas, you see all of that advocacy in action from the Reflections Program that supports students' expression through literature and arts and performing arts, right through to STEM in Families, which bring STEM learning beyond the classroom. So it's our responsibility to take that core of the PTA and bring it to the school district. So just a few ways we're going to do that this year. First is Reflections. First time in close to a decade that we're going to have it here. It's a tiered arts competition. Essentially, students submit pieces of art based on the theme. And if they get chosen to go to regional, then they have a chance to go to state. Then they have a chance to go to national, where they have a chance to get art scholarships. Next, we've got a very, very pared-down part program this year. Most of the PTAs do, like, really fireworks, all of the, all of the kit and caboodle. So we've got a very pared-down version this year. So we started it with hosting a Storytime with Lupi in August. We handed out reading accessories. We spoke to parents about how they can be used at home to help their child learn to read. And then we're going to be doing a book giveaway in March. So moving on to every child travel safety, safely. Our PTA handed out information. If you saw us over the summer or at any of the open houses, we're handing out some information there. We requested a box of medication knockbags from the Office of Additional, or Addiction Services and Supports. We handed those out to not just the health offices throughout the district, but we also had an opportunity to hand those out to families during open houses. Next, healthy lifestyles. We're working on promoting family time outdoors. And then early next year, we're going to be hosting some social-emotional workshops as well. Next, STEM in Families. We hosted a spooky STEM night, and we're hoping to bring back the take-home STEM kits in the spring as well. And then, of course, sharing and promoting PTA-partnered webinars to membership. So aside from the PTA initiatives, we're planning some additional family events. And we've also set aside some funds to go to non-PTA programs as well. Then lastly, collaboration for maximum reach and impact with some, with some organizations that are in the community. So finally, you belong in the PTA. So the difference between a PTA and a PTO, PTA, anybody can be a member. Anybody in the community. You don't have to have a child in the school district. You can even be a member of multiple PTAs. So if, if you want, you can scan that little QR code and take it to a link where you can, you can choose to become a member. If you're watching at home and you're watching at home, I can't help you. Actually, I'm joking. I have a link. It's really easy. There we go. G E S D dot givebacks dot com. And we also accept donations. So thank you again for your time, and we'll see you around this year. You'll see our faces a lot. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, Sarah, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have anything for the PTA?
All right. Next presentation, I'll turn it over to Jen Hazard from the Key Club. I'll move again.
Can you stick it up there, too? I don't want slides to go up.
Oh, okay.
Instead of there, just so my back isn't to everyone. Is that okay?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. I don't have slides. Sorry about that. So I know I'm usually talking about science, but today I'm just here to talk really quickly about Key Club. There's two, two things I want to mention. So first thing is some Key Club stats. So this year, the Key Club has seventy-two members, which I feel like is a lot. And these are not just kids that want something to slap on their resume without really doing anything. These are pretty active members. Every meeting, my room is packed. I don't even give out anything for free at them. They just show up, and they show up to events. We just did our biggest event so far for the year, one of our biggest of the year, which was our trunk-or-treat, which I'd actually like to really quickly say thank you to everyone that donated candy or donated their time by either having a trunk or volunteering in some way. Specifically, the PTA was there. They had multiple cars. They looked awesome. Spanish four, Jenny Broncos scholars, they, they showed up with two cars dressed as a Day of the Dead theme. Our, our resource officers came out with a car. It was great. So thank you to everybody that was involved in some way. I think we, did we estimate seven hundred people came, children came through? Give or take, maybe more than that, but we went through a lot of candy. We were just like kind of scrambling at the end to make sure everybody had enough candy. They've also done a cleanup at the Concordia Club this year. We've had two fundraiser bake sales, which were a big hit. We had students volunteering at Wolfstock and just other miscellaneous things that if somebody in the community needs helping hands, they email me, and I've always got some kids that want to volunteer. So they've been great. They really are active, and I'm very proud of them. Our next really big, probably our biggest, most important event of the year is our Sponsor a Child program for Christmas. Last year, just kind of gave me an idea, we made Christmas happen for two-hundred-and-seventy-six kids in our school district. This year, I already have three-hundred-and-twenty-five children signed up, and the registration isn't even closed yet. So that's a lot, that's a lot of children. So we need help. We have a hundred-and-ten kids covered so far this year. So as you can imagine, do the math, three-hundred-and-twenty-five minus one-ten, that's how many kids we still need sponsors for. What does a sponsorship include? So to sponsor a child, we ask that sponsor, and listen, this doesn't have to be one person per child. For example, our math department at the high school, instead of like buying each other socks for everybody in their department, they collectively decided that they're going to sponsor a child. They did it last year. It was great. So you can team up with friends, family to sponsor a child collectively. So we ask that to cover a child, you purchase them off of their wish list, which I call every household and talk to their families and put together these lists, something that they want, like a toy or something, something they need. Maybe winter boots or bath stuff, bath soap, shampoo, whatever. Something to wear, maybe a little outfit, and then something to read, which is obviously a book. And we package that up. Last year, I don't know if you saw the video, but we had like a warehouse down my hallway. We put some wrapping paper, tape, and whatever they might need to wrap it, and the families come and pick it up. We have two pickup nights. Now, this year, I just, actually, right before I came here, got off the phone with our very own LaShawn Hawkins, who's amazing. Love her. She recently rebranded her nonprofit organization. I think she's calling it LaShawn's Heart now. And we're going to team up again this year to try to get all of those kids covered and more. She is going to do her sleigh again this year, and we're going to have some of those children get their presents delivered to them with Santa Claus on a sleigh, and that's going to be amazing. And the other families will do the same thing with the pickup. So really, like I said, the biggest thing this year is we're in need of sponsors. So I would ask board members, faculty, people of G E S D, people at home, if you can in some way help out, it would be so appreciated. I mean, when these families come to pick up the gifts, I know that, you know, people have asked me like, what, you know, what do they like when they come and pick it up? Like, do they feel like there's an expectation? No. The people that come when they pick up the gifts, they're just so grateful. They're crying, I'm crying, like it's just, we really make it happen for these, for these children. Going off of that, our, like, event that you could come to and attend is our Breakfast with Santa. This is a fundraiser where all the money that we raise goes towards covering children that I was not able to secure a sponsor for. So let's say we get three-hundred children sponsored, those remaining twenty-five children would be sponsored by the Key Club from the money that we get with our Breakfast with Santa. It is on Saturday, December seventh, from eight-thirty to ten a.m. I'm going to, in advance, give a big shout-out to our cafeteria staff. Not only do they show up to work on a day that they normally wouldn't, they're dressed up and super festive, and I really appreciate them for the work they do on that day. Same thing with our custodial staff, to come in and help set up and take down for that event. On that day, we have a breakfast for, tickets are five dollars, or a family four-pack for eighteen. And we have a delicious breakfast. We also have a free professional photo with Santa. Big shout-out to Sarah Baldwin. She does that for free. She just volunteers her time. We also have Key Club scholars there to do face painting and a craft with the children, and they help clean up. And, oh, and we have basket raffles. If anybody would love to donate a raffle, a basket to raffle off at that event, I think last year we made like twelve-hundred dollars alone on just the basket raffle on the ticket. So if you would like to, as a department, put together a basket to raffle off, that would be great, too. All of the information for this is on the district Facebook page, I think, right? If it's not, it'll be shared on there. I'm pretty sure it is, though. And will, I will personally keep resharing it as well. If a person is interested in sponsoring, there's a QR code on there, or you can just email me directly, jhazard@gesdk12.org, and I'll just keep pushing that out from now until December. So I started before Halloween, but now that we're getting into the actual holiday season, I hope that, that everybody will consider helping out in some way to make Christmas happen for kids in our district. So thank you for having me. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
All right. Next presentation, we have Courtney Wood with the literacy update.
Hello, everybody. I'm Courtney Woods. For those of you who I haven't met, I'm a reading teacher here in Gloversville. This is my seventeenth year here in Gloversville. And this year, with the efforts of the district and my teachers' association, I am an ATOSA to support literacy at a larger scale at K-12 across the district. So I'm just going to share a little bit about how our scholars came in in regards to literacy at K-12 and some of the great things that our teachers are doing and our scholars are doing in response to some of our literacy initiatives. So I'm starting with just a quick data share of the primary buildings, Kingsboro and Park Terrace. This is how the two buildings came in for K-2 on their M-class assessment, their DIBELS assessment. I'm sharing this one instead of the iReady, just because I think as a whole, our teachers kind of feel like this is the more accurate assessment for our younger scholars because they're not as digitally fluent yet. So the iReady, sometimes we put, we put stock in it, but more so in these assessments because they're right in person with the young children. So this is how they came in at K-2, and this is our three-five scholars at Boulevard, how they did on the DIBELS measure, which, just a quick kind of synopsis of that. These are just one-minute screeners, universal screeners. All of our assess, or all of our kiddos get them at K-5 just to get a quick kind of glimpse of where their reading skills are. So some of the things that we have in place at the K-5 level are still continuing with CKLA. So we're in year two of Core Knowledge Language Arts with K-5. As I mentioned, all K-5 scholars were given those two universal screeners. And then we have this assessment flowchart here on the left. So there's a lot going on there, but essentially what it is, is any scholar who we're feeling like we might just need to take a deeper look at, there's a little flowchart to help us guide what kind of assessments we might look at further. We also have WIN happening again this year. Right now, for first through fifth grade, the scholars are moving across their grade level to skill-based groups. Over the summer, we refined some of our AIS criteria to help determine any scholars that might be in need of an additional lever, level of support. So we have Tier One happening with CKLA. We have Tier Two, everyone receiving what I need. And then this year, we also added in a layer of Tier Three. So some of our kiddos are getting an extra twenty to forty minutes small group, two to five days a week, depending on buildings and schedules. We also have progress monitoring happening. You can see a little snapshot of the progress monitoring schedule there. All of our scholars that came in in the red or yellow, so kind of struggling or emerging, we're keeping a close eye on them every two to four weeks. Ongoing professional development for our teachers. We had some M-class professional development on the superintendent's conference day. So those, the two slides that I just had shared with the data, we had some time on superintendent's day to really dive in with teachers and talk about how to access that, what it means, and then also what kind of suggested resources are available based on how the scholars did on their M-class. We're going to revisit some Amplify Professional Development in December. So now that we're in year two, just kind of going back and noticing any places or gaps where we feel like we have some further questions. And we've also kicked off some student-centered coaching cycles, starting at Boulevard. We have two active cycles happening right now where I am fortunate to be able to work alongside. some teachers who just volunteered and said, hey, you know, I'd like a closer look at my group. We kind of got together, did some assessments together, set a goal, made an action plan, and we're in the process of co-teaching together, doing that for a few weeks. We are in year two of the MTSSI grant right now, focusing on reading this year, so we just did the TFI kind of assessment to see where we're at, and we'll be spending a lot of our time this year looking at reading across the district and setting some goals. And then I did want to highlight the foundation as well, just thinking back two slides ago to our kindergartners that came in, you can see our incoming kindergartners this year, we did come in with about 78% of them below grade level. So I wanted to just give a shout out to the Ed Foundation for that kind of community work that we're doing for those younger, not-yet-age scholars in the community, really trying to build kind of language and reading and vocabulary with them, working on that write-by-text, trying to get families to sign up as we really continue to target those younger learners. So just some fun things you might see in the district right now that teachers and kiddos are doing. So kindergarten this year kicked off Unit One of their knowledge with nursery rhymes and fables, and they're also teaching their scholars how to make, how to form letters and what the verbal, we call them the verbal pathways, the letter formation cues, so starting right in the beginning with just horizontal, vertical lines to form letters. And you can see here how the kindergarten teachers are making it fun, and it looks, it looks to, at the eye to a kindergarten student, oh, we're just painting, but they were actually practicing making vertical, horizontal lines while making Humpty Dumpty's walls. So there's some cute lines of Humpty Dumpty's wall, or walls kind of lined up. And then we're building on this here in third grade, you can see they kicked off the year, also kind of in genres, fables, tales, doing classic tales, and this is an example of narrative that a third-grade scholar wrote in response to the Wind in the Willows. And that vertical piece continues through fifth grade, Unit Four, so they're not quite there yet, but you can see that in fifth grade, then they do the Adventures of Don Quixote, and right away, here's kind of just a snippet of the teacher manual, you can see how it's really building on skills and things that were taught in kindergarten. So it's nice to see, as you go through the different buildings, that vertical piece and how things built from kindergarten through fifth grade. And then one more example in the elementary level, so you can see in our first-grade hallways right now, we have lots of skeletons lining the hallways, and not just for Halloween, they were learning all about the human body. So you can see in first grade, they are learning the specific parts, labeling the body parts, and then over here, by third grade, they just revisited the human body again, this time getting into more specific detail, learning about the different systems. And you can see that, for those of you who can't see the reader, this is what the third graders are reading, Dr. Wellbody comes back and he introduces himself and says, you might remember me from first grade. So it's exciting to see again that vertical piece happening in K-5. Transitioning to middle school, this is how our sixth through eighth grade scholars did on the beginning of the year I-Ready diagnostic. Something new and exciting with the I-Ready piece this year, we now have I-Ready Pro. So any scholars who were read here in this kind of phonics, phonics piece, so scored third grade or below on the phonics piece, are going to naturally sink into this I-Ready Pro pathway. I-Ready Pro is new for older striving learners, I think across not just the district, but the nation as a whole. The feedback on I-Ready for sixth through eighth grade was that scholars were a little bit bored and disengaged. And so I-Ready Pro is really targeted to make it a little bit more mature and sophisticated for the middle-school age students, and there's a lot more autonomy involved in the I-Ready Pro, so there's a little bit more student choice, they can choose their text when they're in the pathway, and rather than bringing them back to the second or third-grade phonics lesson that they may have seen for two, three, four years now, there's a more middle-aged kind of appropriate pathway for them. So I-Ready Pro is new and happening at the middle school, and it's also aligned with the scope and sequence from Anita Archer's Phonics for Reading. And our sixth through eighth grade reading teachers, as well as the sixth through eighth grade self-contained teachers, now have the tangible Phonics for Reading resource as well. So it's nice our sixth through eighth grade scholars have some congruency with the resource they're seeing in class, as well as what they're getting on I-Ready Pro. Over the summer, the teachers did some work with the writing revolution, and kind of collaborated to, on some ideas, they're now using this Tada graphic organizer in ELA, so there's a student sample there, basically just an organizer to help structure the thoughts in writing an essay. So Tada, topic, answer, detail, detail, and analysis, so. And we are looking at, or have been, increasing PD at the secondary level with Science of Reading, so there was some Science of Reading PD on both superintendent's conference day through sixth through eighth, and in the high school as well. And then finally, in the ninth grade reading position, this was new this year, we looked, when kind of determining the scholars that would be in ninth grade reading at the eighth grade data, so we looked essentially at first at the eighth grade DIBELS assessment, so with this, these numbers are here, we're looking at students reading around 135 words per minute, just are they becoming fluent? You can see, these were the scholars, just kind of the numbers, the way they landed, many of them kind of hit the target. Those that didn't, or are kind of showing maybe a need for phonics, are receiving this Rewards Phonics Intervention, there's one for intermediate and secondary. And those that did, and maybe are just struggling more with the vocabulary and comprehension piece, might be working with Morphine Magic, this really helps build vocabulary and morphines. And so that's kind of where our ninth graders are at. 10th through 12th, I think a lot of that right now is kind of relied heavily on the Regents' Exam scores, and I know Jay Jaraback, our HFM coach, has been doing a lot of work with bringing those scores together, sharing them out at department meetings and such. So that is kind of where K-12 literacy is at in a nutshell. Thank you for having me, thank you to the scholars and teachers and admin of Glover'sville for kind of all helping this roll out this year.
All right, next item on the agenda is public comment. Anyone here for a public comment this evening? Move on to the next item, which is board discussion. First, we have the board minutes from the October 7th meeting. Everybody have any questions or comments on those? Motion to approve those minutes then by John, seconded by Mike. All in favor? All right, anyone have anything else for board discussion tonight? All right, move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Before I start, I just want to thank the PTA and Courtney for those reports. I think it's evident, there's a lot of great things happening around the district, and I'm going to jump right into it, acknowledge the number of donations that we've received in the last month, that are worth, some of these are on this agenda, somewhere in October, and I failed to acknowledge those in the October meeting, so bear with me as I acknowledge the following donations to our district. First Choice Financial Federal Credit Union, a donation of backpacks, boots, and school supplies. A donation from a Mayfield student named Timothy McCluck Egan, 100 hygiene bags filled with the central toiletries for Glover's Middle School and Glover's High School scholars. Thank you, Timothy, it's outstanding, young man to do something like that. A donation of $135 from Robert and Sonia, owner of Pop-Hops Ice Cream, to be used for building and PBIS activities. Thank you, Robert. Donation, book donation, the discovery of the history of the American Revolution from Joanne Clear, from the Johnstown chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution to Boulevard Elementary School. And on this agenda, we have a donation of eight supply of teacher kits from the Kids in Need Foundation and Burger King for Park Terrace Elementary School, and a donation of $3,000 from the Greater Johnstown Lions Club to be used for the Backpack Program. So obviously, we've said this numerous times, but it's worth saying again, we have a very generous community who, we really appreciate their support in lifting up our scholars. So thank you to all those agencies and individuals for their generosity. Before I go in, I also want to mention that Nicole Martin is with us tonight, Nicole is a candidate for the reading teacher position at Boulevard, so welcome. We appreciate you coming tonight. Thank you, welcome to Glover'sville. So earlier, well, last month, in October, Sharon, Ed, John, Kelly, and I attended the Annual Nisbitt Convention in New York City, where we attended various conferences on various things like attendance efforts, cybersecurity, and structural advocacy, artificial intelligence, among others. I don't know if there's anything that John, or Ed, or Sharon would like to share about the Nisbitt Convention, but it's always a good opportunity, and there's lots of learning to be done there.
I just want to say that many of the initiatives that they talked about with regards to attendance, we are, we already have in place here, a lot of positive acknowledgement of students who are, who are showing up to school every day, and they're looking at patterns of attendance, and I think that's something that we're doing here as well now, so. And they talked about the fact that the first line of knowledge that a child is missing is, is the teacher in the classroom, and the, the fact that they're the ones that are taking attendance, so I applaud us, I think, you know, the district's doing a lot of good things.
It's, you know, it's, it's nice to know we're not alone, obviously, attendance is a nationwide challenge, Glover'sville seems to be particularly tough in, for our region, but there's many, many districts across the country that are struggling with attendance efforts. Some of the things I'm going to recognize on this agenda are also aimed at improving scholar outcomes, and attendance is certainly a big piece of that. I also want to give a shout out to LaShawn Hawkins for a, the Halloween fundraiser at Park Terrace, the Haunted Basement, I think they raised roughly $2,200 in a cool, innovative, fun way to raise money for the Backpack Program. I think it's something that in years ahead will continue to grow. I walked through it off-hours and it was pretty impressive, so thank you, LaShawn, for coming up with that idea. I also wanted to give a shout out to this Class of 26 Murder at the Pie Auction, it's November 15th, 7:00 p.m. at the Glove Theater, I'm going to be in it, a number of our staff members are going to be in it. That should be interesting. I got to memorize some lines, I'm not a thespian, so more stress, just trying to remember some lines for Murder at the Pie Auction, I think you get to purchase pies if you attend, so should be interesting. So that's 7:00 p.m. on the 15th of November. I also want to give a shout out to Melinda Harrington, Jess Rodriguez, and Jen, this question for you, the Toys for Tots, it's our seventh year that these ladies have headed up our efforts to, to get toys for the Toys for Tots, is that something that you and LaShawn work with them as well, to make sure that the scholars that you mentioned, those 350 children, that the Toys for Tots, toys are also earmarked for some of those kids?
We actually, we, we end up bringing them down to, you know, I think, I don't know, somewhere like Capital Region. I don't know if they end up coming, I know last year, we, my program got like, I don't want to call them leftover toys, but they, that's like kind of like what they were that ended up with me, and then I was able to distribute them like throughout some of the packages, but the ones that we gathered, they, we drive them to the Capital Region somewhere, so I don't know.
Because I, I mean, what, they go to Albany, usually somewhere in the Capital Region, and we send several school buses down, and they're loaded with toys, and we bring them back. I thought they worked for Key Club to wrap those toys in years past.
No, the, like I said, we ended up, we did get some that were like, like leftover Toys for Tots things, so I don't know why they traveled to Albany, and then we get like some back to the area.
When you said, who traveled to Albany?
I don't, I can't, I don't know where the bus.
We went to Albany to pick it up.
Right, we get it. Where does the bus go?
We honestly, we go to like the random warehouse.
It's like in Gilderland.
Yeah, random warehouse in Gilderland, and then we, they go to the Birmingham Walmart.
And the.
It's National Honor Society.
Oh, it's National Honor Society, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, I'm an advisor for that too, but, yeah, we, we go down there and we bring them there, and then we get different ones.
Yeah, so we collect it from like the regional grocery stores, and then we put it on the moving truck and bring it to Walmart.
Right.
And then once they're at Walmart, they're assured to be returned.
But it's not through Key Club, those toys.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that the scholars that you mentioned, that, that those toys are also being utilized for.
Melinda would be the better person to ask that. We just go down there and help, NHS goes and moves them, like into and out of the warehouse.
Okay, I'll touch base with Melinda and Jess, but I did want to recognize that they've been volunteering their time for seven years doing this.
Cross-reference, so they don't double the kids, if that's your concern.
Yes, that was my question.
Yes, that's correct, so we make sure that the kids are not double getting.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a double, for sure.
Perfect, okay. So I thank those ladies for heading that up, it's been seven years in a row now, and obviously, I know they work with Honor Society and LaShawn, her organization as well. Also want to give a shout out to PTA. PTA is the, is doing things in this district that has not been done in the seven years I've been here. So thank you for your leadership, Tess, and the other people in the organization, really excited to see the work that you're doing, and excited about what you're going to be doing in the days ahead. So thank you, nice job with your presentation. And I think that's, it's being well-received from what I could tell by, by the elementary, teachers, administration, parents as well, so thanks so much. And if you have ideas about crossing guides, I'm all ears. Glover's Educational Foundation, I want to, you know, Courtney had mentioned that the foundation is really doing some cool things, and our very own Sharon Pollin joined us, she joined the foundation this past week, and Sharon had a great idea she brought forward that I think everybody could probably get behind is, is establishing a Glover's Hall of Fame for various endeavors, obviously, it's, there's various categories that people have excelled in in life, and I think Sharon did a nice job of bringing that forward, and, you know, we talked about the fact that there had been a foundation, or excuse me, Hall of Fame here, and we discussed whether it made sense to make the inaugural class, those who had been recognized by the district in years past, but I think it's a conversation worthy of fleshing out more, and I think the foundation is the perfect entity to head that work up. So Sharon, I don't want to speak for you, if you want to mention.
I, I just think that recognizing different categories of people who have, have contributed to this district, certainly scholars, alumni would be a category, but coaches would be a category. I would like to see teachers and administrators, anyone who has contributed to this district, and that young people can look at those individuals and say, this, these people gave to my community and aspire to do something like that, so they become role models, and it's something, and I think there's all, all forms of motivation, and one of the forms of motivation is, is recognition for, for being, for selling in your field, so that's why I would like to see it come back.
I don't think it's, anybody would argue against that, I think it's a great idea. Osama, we talked about doing something digitally, right, to have a, he's hiding back there. I got to give Osama credit, he's done, he put a lot of time into the foundation as well, putting the website together, so thank you for your work, Osama. He's creating some donation pages, right, for people who want to donate to the foundation, there's various causes, you know, Tess and Courtney spoke to some of them, but Sharon just mentioned is another one, and there's other things as well for even older scholars. So we are excited with the foundation, we think it's just going to grow in the years ahead, and hopefully we can start having some larger fundraising activities in the city, in the community, that can help fund various initiatives supported by the foundation. Thanks for bringing that forward, Sharon. I also want to give a shout out to Mike Hollenbeck, Mike and Diane Hollenbeck, for their Positive Referral Program in GMS. It's a program that they just started and recognizes scholars, identified, recognized random acts of kindness, overall positive behaviors, and I think it's a great idea, I saw the first group photo coming out, those scholars being recognized, and it's, it's awesome, because I think some, some of the kids maybe haven't historically been recognized for positive behavior, so to see that occur is great. behaviors, so to see that occur is great. Cody, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add to explain the program?
No, it was, you know, Diana and Mike came to transcite the idea. Anything to highlight some of the positive behaviors that we see daily that we don't usually have time to address? I think it was a great idea. We brought the kids in, you know, some of them were very nervous being sent to the principal's office, probably for their very first time. Often, some of them for their very first time never see our office, so it was a great time. We got to communicate with families, families that we don't generally have time to communicate with. So it was just another connection. So we, all we're asking is for our teachers to, you know, if you have any kids who are doing what's expected of them, day in and day out, on Friday, we try to call those kids down after they've sent us an email. We read the write-up that their teachers had given them, and just try to make a positive connection with the union members.
Awesome. So I think it's a great initiative, and I appreciate Mike and Diane for bringing that forward. Also want to, tonight's agenda is recognize those staff members in the high school who are willing to be mentors for at-risk scholars in the high school. I think there's 20 people, correct? Covering various bargaining units, and we appreciate their willingness to be that person in some at-risk scholars' lives, to help them come up that hill each and every day, and try to put their best foot forward, to be the best version of themselves. So looking at the names, I think she's, Christina and Dave have got some outstanding people. So, well done, really excited about the work that those mentors will do. To Sharon's point about attendance efforts, that's, you know, the mentoring programs are a big piece of the success, and districts have shown some growth and improvement in attendance efforts. And last but not least, I'd be remiss to not mention, tonight's agenda, there's a prorating of our department coordinator positions. And I don't know if there was some department coordinators here, I'm, yes, there are, so I'm still here. I want to thank every department coordinator for their willingness to be instructional leaders. I know the time they've put in in the last few years to improve their craft, improve their abilities in this capacity. It's unfortunate, we're unable to come to agreement with GTA leadership on the job description. And despite what's been recently promulgated, we certainly do value teachers, their time, and their skills. We wouldn't spend hours and hours and hours just in the last month doing walkthroughs. Dr. Jeski and I have done 25 to 30 in the last month. We certainly do value what transpires in those classrooms each and every day. And we make sure that we provide feedback to those teachers, at least one of us does. Sometimes it gets away from you, but usually, definitely one of us will provide feedback from those walkthroughs. We certainly value, we know what, where the magic happens, and it is in the classroom. You know, the Board of Education Administration tip our hats to those willing to be teacher leaders. We understand it can be a thankless job, and hopefully, we can revisit this important work in the days ahead, in the years ahead. We stand ready to work with any employee or groups of employee, employees who wish to try to lift up our scholars. You know, the door's open, we're here for the kids. I don't think anybody is in this profession because they don't like kids. We have a lot of scholars that could use our help, and it's important, whether you're an administrator, teacher, TA, an aide, a bus driver, regardless of your capacity in this district, we will work with anybody who wants to help our scholars be the best version of themselves. So again, appreciate those department chairperson's willingness to be teacher leaders, and hope to revisit that in the future. And I, that concludes my report, and I do need an executive session to discuss personnel matters. Any questions for me?
Just a note on the compliment program. So I think there would be value in the district looking into it more holistically. I don't know what that means for all the schools, all the teachers, but in the private sector, there is a lot of value in recognition programs, because you're always deterring negative behaviors, right, team members. So if you have a positive, culture-centric way to rate things to positive, that kind of diminishes the negative. Now, a lot of those programs that exist, there are platforms and programs out there that allow you to use them, so they can get, for lack of better words, reward bucks, right, where they can, if you get X amount of rewards or compliments throughout the year, you can use them in a, I don't know, a Husky shop or a Grappa shop. There's just, there's just a thousand different things you can do with it, and that would be a way to promote positivity.
I know, so Boulevard has a program similar to that, correct, Brian, with the Husky Bucks?
Yeah, it's not just Boulevard, K, pre-K5, we do our PBIS, so it's Positive Behavior Intervention Support. At Boulevard specifically, we do have our Husky tickets and our Husky points for our fifth grades, and they do, we cash those in every week, and those are students, students are recognized for just kind of exactly what's going on in the middle school, just copying and doing the right thing, and following our expectations. They get rewarded for that, and we have a school store at Boulevard that kids can cash in their points and everything. And we do that at the kids. If things happen, we ask them to come very little.
Yeah, I think it's more embedded and baked in at the elementary level in most districts, but I think middle school and high school students aren't above working hard for positive accolades and recognition, so I'm sure that's an area that we could probably continuously improve upon. So thanks for putting it up. Any other questions for me? Yeah, thank you.
All right. Next item is our student board member report.
All right. Yeah. Overall, things at the high school, they're going well. So far, the school year's going well, all of our clubs, they're up and running, it's great. Football season is coming to a close. At their last game, they really did prove to be a family, which was wonderful. They really, they came together, they've been very unified this year, which is wonderful to see. I would like to highlight one course at the high school, which is Forms of Writing. It's currently an English course that I've been taking this year. It's very wonderful. So far, it's been highlighting real-world practical writing techniques. We've written college essays, we've learned how to write business reports, business plans. We've learned instructional writing. There's just tons of different writing that we've learned, and it's really proven to be a very effective English course. I mean, I've learned more in this course in the 10 weeks that I've been in, and then I have my entire educational career in English. This course is genuinely, it's a gem. So I'd love to highlight.
Shout out to who teaches it?
That's, that's Ms. Polin. She's doing a great job. It's a wonderful course. I know I talked about this a little bit last time, but the lunch lines are still very, very long, which is causing a lot of kids to take food to classes. Today, it took me 14 and a half minutes to get through the lunch line. They're kind of laughing down here because they were talking about this, that I did have to time it, but yeah, so that still does take a little bit of time. And it's not the kids getting through the line, it's just the time that it takes to get the food out. We're only, there's only one staff member working per line, so there's definitely a little bit of a holdup when they have to assemble food. So I don't know if that could be increased staffing, or if that's, you know, pre-making stuff more, but it's definitely a problem.
That sounds like a fixable problem.
Yeah.
So.
It shouldn't be doing anything different. And the other thing ties into Yonder Pouches a little bit, but it's our internet policies at school. So going zero tolerance with cell phones, especially in college courses, can be difficult, especially because when using college courses, we're required to use our personal emails. So when we have to get verification codes or sign into, for example, our Supa courses, we have to sign into Syracuse libraries to access certain databases. It's very, very difficult to do that without having a personal computer or a cellphone, because we can't access those sites with our computers. And part of it's firewalls, but also part of it is we can't log into personal emails. So I spoke with Bill Cooper about personally logging into personal emails, but the problem is if we log into our personal emails, they'll be filtered through GoGuardian, which is a huge privacy risk. So that's not a solution. But, and I know it's obviously hard, because we can't just unlock Yonder Pouches for certain courses throughout the day, because I know we have our tier system with Yonder in place. But possible solutions could obviously be, we could adjust our firewalls, because there's certain sites, news sites and outlets that we cannot access, and databases that we need for certain college courses, as well as regular courses within the high school. But yeah, so that's definitely a problem. And then, I think that's about it, but just, we need a little bit more of an expanded internet access with more concise firewalls, because there's tons of websites that we can access, that we don't need to, and there's tons of websites that we cannot, that we can't. So.
Ms. Live, we have.
Yeah, so generally speaking, if a teacher in a classroom knows they need to access a website or things of that nature, they can request to have it open. It can be done temporarily or permanently, so those are things that we have to work more closely with the instructional staff on, which websites do we need to make sure are pre-approved so that they can get to them in their classrooms? The personal email is not something that I think that we would be able to come up with a quick solution to, just because of what he mentioned. As soon as they access personal information through our system, it allows all the filtering to take place, so that's kind of where that comes from. But we definitely can get around some of those black websites for the kids.
So the Supa classes require you to use your personal email as opposed to your student email?
Yes, so any Supa classes, FM classes, or classes through U Albany, and it's not as much with U Albany, but a lot of classes require us to use our personal email to log into things, and use our personal email to create accounts, and receive verification codes, and access libraries, and just for general web surfing. So it definitely creates a challenge. Like I know for, there's a certain module that we have to do for our Public Affairs class, and there is certain parts that we have to wait to go home in order to do, because we cannot log in under our school accounts. So that's class time that we can't spend effectively working.
I'd like to think we can put it together, come up with a solution to that.
Even if you take a professional development through the Capital Region Teacher Center, you have to have a personal email address, you can't use your school one. So he's absolutely right, there are definitely some professional entities that don't allow you to use a GSD.
I'd like to think there's a way, a way around it, rather than just say tough luck, whether it's coming up with Yonder Pouch, Maggots, in different locations, or, I don't know, I think we can get together with Google.
Our key box on the page is by him.
I mean, I think only, roughly 100 and some odd kids are using their Yonder Pouches in, are you sure, is that correct?
That is correct. And as of right now, the Yonder Pouch situation has been working well. I haven't even myself seen any cell phones. Just the threat of having a Yonder Pouch in the building is doing enough to keep the cell phones out of students' hands. And even just to expand a little bit more with computers in the real world, I know we have a deal with Google in order to get the Chromebooks, but if we could expand into Microsoft suites, I feel like that that would help a lot of students, especially because Microsoft is the way that the business world works. So operating under Google suites, we're offering a disadvantage to students, who then, when they transition into the business world, they're not able to use Microsoft suites.
Yeah, Google got its market cornered on education because it was free. I've been doing this long enough to remember when Google, or when Microsoft did have all the educational platforms, they're charging districts thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. Google came in and offered comparable products for free.
Of course, and we all love free.
Right, so that's, that's the main reason why you see Google platforms systemic throughout education, which is probably smart on their part, but it's not like there's some trials. I'm receptive or open-minded to looking at if that makes sense holistically, and look at the cause, and look at the benefit, and things like that. Yeah, it's not the first time I've heard people say that we're probably doing kids a disservice by using a Google platform instead of Microsoft. I don't know how other people feel about that. Some of you, there's people here in the private sector, what do you guys use?
Microsoft.
Microsoft, yeah. Oh, exclusively. You're Microsoft too?
State is Microsoft.
Really?
Although we did try to go to Google to squeeze Microsoft for a better deal, but.
How'd that work? They didn't blink?
They didn't blink, but Google was terrible, so. Sorry, Google. Sorry, you're probably listening, Google, I'm sorry.
Press, I think it's, and, and, Google also had a better product once upon a time, because it used to be Microsoft Word, there was multiple iterations of the same document, where Google, everybody who updated it, the document was updated. And I know Microsoft is now there, it's a similar.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, now Microsoft has OneDrive.
Right.
And they have, you know, secret.
It wasn't like that when they, when schools first went to Google, Google Docs is definitely more robust than Word, at least that document. I know, I think the spreadsheets have always been better in Microsoft.
Yeah. Well, I think that's about it for my report.
It's a pleasure as always.
Appreciate your time, guys, thank you.
I think we can ensure that conversation continues with Mrs. Lives and Mr. Ware. Thank you.
Questions? All right, move on to recommended items, 7.01 through 16.80. Anybody need questions, comments, or anything polled? Probably not. Motion to approve all those items by Ed, seconded by Heath. All in favor? And then a motion to go into executive session to discuss the personnel item, motion by